I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Now if you'll actually remain standing, I'm gonna invite the, uh, the men and women of our recruiting stations that we've invited here to come up forward. We're going to start with a moment of silence for the United States honorable service members killed in line of duty in Chattanooga, Tennessee, so we thought it'd be a good idea to invite some of our own recruiters from our own community here, and I'm gonna turn it over to Councilman DeHart to actually say a few words before the moment of silence.
I'm honored and I'm very humbled to stand before these men and women who represent the finest in our country, not just because of who they are or what organization they belong to, but because they represent the best and the finest of who we are as a society. They are our future. Young people who are professional and motivated, dedicated and committed to serving without reservation. As we witnessed in Chattanooga, five of their brethren in arms were taken from us, and we join as a nation in that morning. As we take this moment of silence, help me remember Gunnery Sergeant Thomas Sullivan, United States Marine Corps, Staff Sergeant David Wyatt, United States Marine Corps, Sergeant Carson Homquist, United States Marine Corps, and Lance Corporal Squire Skip Wells, United States Marine Corps. Additionally, Petty Officer Second Class Randall Smith, United States Navy. Join with me in gratitude and appreciation for their service and for the service of those standing before us. Join with me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Give him a round of applause. Alright, you may be seated. Coach Jan here, where's Coach? Come on up, we're excited. We have some awesome members of our community, and our community just doesn't extend to the city limits. It also includes what's inside our city limits, which is California State University Stanislaus. So I want to thank the Vice Mayor for bringing this to our attention, and Dr. Milton Richards Ware, he's former athletic director, he's in the back, uh, thank you so much for, uh, bringing this to our attention. I'm going to, uh, talk about your retirement, and talk about all your accolades, and then give you the microphone, if that's okay.
Sure.
So, um, by the way, Coach Jan, last name?
Shefkoit.
Shefkoit. Mayor Soyseth is having issues with Shef- Shefkoit.
I understand that.
Alright, so, whereas Coach Jan, we're gonna go with that, yeah.
That's good, that's good.
Retired after a career of twenty-three years as the head coach of the California State University Stanislaus Warriors Women Softball Program, years that were marked by dedicated service to the university faculty and students. And whereas during her illustrious career, Coach Jan posted five hundred and fifty-seven victories in softball, including leading the Warriors to a two thousand and seven West Region Championship, a California Collegiate Athletic Association title in two thousand and eight, and six NCAA postseason tournament appearances. Whereas under Coach Jan's li- uh, guidance, more than ninety Warrior athletes have earned all region awards, and in two thousand, Coach Jan was honored as CCAA Coach of the Year. And whereas Coach Jan was instrumental in establishing the Tournament of Champions, CSU at Stanislaus Warriors Women Softball Tournament, through which valuable tourism funding was generated for our community, we thank you. Uh, and whereas for more than two decades, Coach Jan was exemplified, has exemplified class and dignity, and has been a role model for the young women that have played in the program. And whereas Coach Jan has earned admiration of those with whom she has come in contact, with all of whom are proud to call her friend, now therefore I, Gary Soyseth, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Turlock, and beha- and on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby recognize CSU Stanislaus Coach Jan for twenty-three years of dedicated service, and call upon students' families and fellow coaches to join with me in conveying to her our appreciation for her dedication to collegiate athletics. Congratulations.
Thank you. I've just enjoyed the ride very much, I've enjoyed Turlock and loved how it's grown, so, thank you.
Yeah, I'm not gonna try it again. Alright, Coach Jan, I like it, I like it. Alright, John Cook up here. John, come on up. Oh yeah, I saw you back there. Alright, we're talking golf now, going from softball to golf. I'm gonna say a proclamation and then turn the microphone over to you. In honor of John Cook, California State University Stanislaus. Whereas John Cook has been the head coach of the CSU Stanislaus Warriors Golf Team since two thousand and eight, mentoring and serving the students of California State University Stanislaus. And whereas these years of service have been instrumental in guiding the success of the men's golf program. And whereas during his tenure, Coach Cook has compiled an impressive list of accomplishments, including leading all seven teams to the National Collegiate Athletic Association Tournament, the two thousand and twelve West Region Champions, and consecutive California Collegiate Athletic Association Champions. And whereas among his noteworthy accomplishments, Coach Cook had the honor of being named the GCAA Western Region Coach of the Year in two thousand and nine, and the CCAA Coach of the Year in two thousand and ten, two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, something happened, and in two thousand and fifteen, alright, four years. Whereas through all these numerous endeavors, he has won the highest regard of all his associates and admiration of citizens throughout our community. Now therefore I, Gary Soyseth, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Turlock, and on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby recognize John Cook for his outstanding accomplishments and dedicated service, and extend our best wishes for continued success in all his future endeavors. Congratulations.
I'd just like to thank the council, um, for this, I appreciate that. Mayor Soyseth, and, uh, the community's great, um, we're still living here and I'm working up the road a little bit, but we're still here supporting the community, so thank you guys, thank you.
All of this is right in our backyard, I love it, so, uh, I'm gonna invite the ropers up, Red, who's coming up? Alright, who, oh, all of you, okay. We had a great conversation earlier, and, uh, now I get to give the official proclamation to talk about how much we value you, and, uh, all that, uh, the ropers do for, for Turlock. Whereas ACTRA, American Cowboys Team Roping Association, is the largest nonprofit roping organization in the United States. And whereas ACTRA was founded in nineteen eighty-three and has chapters in California, Colorado, Hawaii, Nevada, Idaho, Washington, Oregon, Canada, B.C., Vice Mayor, Wyoming, Arizona, Utah, and Montana. And whereas ACTRA is owned and operated by its members. Whereas ACTRA supports younger members of the organization by offering scholarship programs to assist with funding for college. And whereas ACTRA is planning California Chapter Team Roping Championship Championships to be held September seventeenth through twentieth, two thousand and fifteen, at our very own Stanislaus County Fairgrounds here in Turlock. And whereas this event will offer roping activities designed for professional team ropers, families, and individuals who pursue the team roping sport as a hobby. And whereas in addition to these activities, a banquet will be held on September eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen, hosting the catastrophe fund auction and year-end rewards. And whereas ACTRA's goal is to provide an organization to which families and professional ropers are proud to belong, holding true to their motto, ACTRA, where families come to rope. Now therefore I, Gary Soyseth, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Turlock, and on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby proclaim seventh, September seventeenth through twentieth, to be ACTRA, California Chapter Team Roping Championships, urging all citizens to enjoy themselves by participating in the exciting activities planned for these championships, and do further, uh, commend organization members who have contributed to so much to make this event a memorable occasion. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. Please take the microphone.
What a great surprise it was, I wanna thank all of you. But before I say much more, I wanna tell you from a personal perspective how refreshing it is to see our government take time to pay tribute to our God and country as you guys have done tonight. I think if more of our government officials looked at things the way you guys do, we could be a lot better off than we are, and I thank you and a tip of the hat for that. Actra's been in business for thirty-three years, starting right here in the Valley and growing. And it's a family organization, and our job is to handicap people, much like people are handicapped in golf. And because of the growth, we've outgrown many of the facilities around the state of California. When we came here five years ago, through the fair, through the city, the chamber, and everybody else, you guys stuck your hand out, welcomed us in here, and made us feel at home. So for the last five years, we've continued to do what we love to do, and that's provide the best for our members, and you guys have certainly held up your end of the bargain, as making us feel, huh, feel like this is our true home. Thank you so much, and I appreciate that.
We had a conversation earlier, and, uh, I think someone mentioned roping the mayor and vice mayor at the event, and, uh, I told them they, they have to get in line, 'cause there's a lot of people that wanna rope us. Thank you so much, we look forward to that event in September. Uh, tonight, moving on to, uh, special briefings, we have none, moving on to staff updates. Property located at one zero five five Vermont Avenue update, Mayor and Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, the purpose of this update to Council is, if you might remember back in April fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen, council meeting, um, I came before you to ask, um, for a short-term general fund loan to help repair a property that we had purchased, um, and ensuing set of circumstances had ended up with it during the fall of the, um, uh, real estate market. So my purpose today is to just basically, to come to say thank you. Um, we've completed the rehabilitation, we are in escrow and estimate closing in two weeks for a family, a deserving family, that this is their first, um, purchase of a home. And just to give you a little update on, um, the pictures. So as you might remember, that this is what it looked like back in February, um, and this. And, um, and this is what it looks like today. Uh, we did not intentionally put a lawn in, um, or go into their escaping, um, but it's all been fixed and repainted, and, um, looks like a brand-new house. So we wanna thank you for the thirty-eight thousand dollar loan, which we will be able to pay back completely, and we close escrow in two weeks, and again, I just wanna say thank you for, uh, for kind of going outside the box to help us, uh, bring this affordable unit back into having a family in it, so, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments? No, thank you so much, so, it's great. Alright, seeing none, we'll move on to, uh, staff updates, the National Night Out, August fourth, uh, two thousand and fifteen.
Good evening, Council. Good evening, Mayor. I'd like to let you know that we're well on our ways in preparing for the two thousand and fifteen National Night Out event, which is Tuesday, August fourth. As I'm sure you're aware, National Night Out is a nationwide program that the City of Turlock participates in each year. It involves local neighborhoods, Turlock Police and Fire, city officials, and local businesses. The program highlights the ongoing partnership between public safety, local businesses, and our community, including Neighborhood Watch, fire prevention, safe school programs, crime prevention, and many others. This year will be our seventh official year in participating in the program. We currently have thirty-four registered neighborhoods, with over forty local businesses that have sponsored the program. National Night Out is an opportunity to strengthen those partnerships by encouraging neighborhood spirit and providing visits by public safety and city officials. It's a message to all that crime will not be tolerated in our city. This year, the Recreation Department will also be hosting a block party at Columbia Park for those that live in the area, as well as those who wish to participate in National Night Out but don't have a block party in their neighborhood. I'd like to thank Eric Scholes and the Recreation Department for their efforts in coordinating the Columbia Park event. I'd also like to thank, um, personally thank the council members and Mayor for your support, not only in National Night Out, but with the Crime Prevention Program. Uh, truly appreciated, so thank you. I would like to also invite each of the council members, uh, Mayor, for you to participate in National Night Out, which will be on Tuesday, August fourth, from five thirty to nine P.M. I'd also in- invite all of the community members that are interested in participating in the event, or if you simply have questions, feel free to contact me. Thank you, may I answer any questions?
Any questions or comments? No, I should've opened this up, any questions or comments from the public on this item? Alright, bring it back. Thank you so much, you guys are doing a great job on planning, it was good seeing you all, uh, the other day, and, uh, we're looking forward to making the rounds as council.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Absolutely, moving on to a water update, Director Cook.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Um, as I reported last month, we fell a little bit short of our water conservation goal. Fingers crossed, we should be pretty darned close to meeting that thirty-two percent target by the end of this month. There's only one more legal day to water your yard in Turlock this month, so that's tomorrow, so, no watering on the thirty-first. I hope at that point, we should be meeting our target. And there's a couple of reasons for that. Uh, proactive efforts, I wanna thank the, the Allison's group for finding a way to save even more water at our spray parks. They've cut that usage back forty percent, and still giving the kids a chance to cool off. Um, we have been more aggressive on enforcement. Um, the first six months of this year, we had nine hundred and forty notices to water wasters. This month alone, to date, we've sent out six hundred and three notices, um, fifty-seven, five hundred and seventy-one first warnings, and thirty-two second violations, which means fines. Uh, today, our water school, online water school went active, and so Tony Cordell's been heading that up, so people who have a fine have a chance to, uh, work that off by, uh, attending about a two-hour online class to, um, learn more about conservation and the rules and regulations in Turlock. And I remember Councilman Asamoah meant to blow that to my attention back at Christmas, so hopefully we'll get, well, ideally, no one will take the class, or no one will pay a fine, 'cause they're, they're not wasting water, but obviously some will, and we'll see how that goes, and we'll work, work through any issues with that that gets off the ground. And we also have a new, um, proactive approach where, uh, you can get a home survey kit, you can fill out a form and go to the various showers and faucets and sprinklers in your house, and figure out how much water you're using, how to save, and that type of thing, so, um, good things, uh, hopefully this month, and hopefully we'll sustain that momentum, uh, going forward. I did wanna also give- Whoa. That was our last good mic. Hopefully- That's the general fund cost right there, okay. So, um, I do wanna give you an update on a historic today, day today in Turlock with the, um, TIDs, is it on? I don't, I won't use it, I'm bad at that. Um, uh, historic day in Turlock with the Turlock Irrigation District did approve the Water Cells Agreement between the Stanislaus Regional Water Authority and TID. And as you know, Turlock is a member of the SRWA, it's Turlock, Series, and Modesto. So I wanna just, uh, brief you about that, you've probably seen some, some things in the media, um, I'll go from here. So, um, this, this is for a drinking water plant on the Torrey River to provide, uh, water to the three cities. But negotiations have been going on really since nineteen eighty-seven, um, with some stops and starts in between. TID did some work in the river in two thousand and one to make it feasible. There was a drinking water agreement in two thousand and five, where we did some of the preliminary environmental and engineering analysis of the project with TID. And then TID purchased some land near the river to build the treatment plant on. And then in two thousand and eleven, the JPA was formed, the Joint Powers Agreement, the Authority, between Turlock, Series, and Modesto created in the SRWA. So basically, the project has three components. TID owns the, what we call the delivery facilities, they have the infiltration gallery in the river, and I'll show you a picture of that in a moment, a pumping plant, and a pipeline that then goes to the water treatment plant, which will be owned by the SRWA, and then from there, there's pipe, various transmission pipelines to the three cities. This is the infiltration gallery, so these are forty-two inch pipes laid in the bed of the river. If you can see in the background there, there's the, uh, Gear Road Bridge, that, that picture on the left, so this is just to the west of the Gear Road Bridge there at the Torrey River, so as you're on your way to the, the fruit yard. Um, and so that was built in two thousand and one, that will actually pump the water out of the riverbed. And then from there, so here's the, um, infiltration gallery, pipeline over to the proposed water treatment plant, and from there, next slide, pipelines that go to the various cities. So you'll see, these are just preliminary, there'll be, we think a pipeline south of there, basically along Berkeley Avenue, to east Turlock where we integrate it into our system. And then Series and Modesto will build a pipeline along Hatch Road, and then down into, uh, Series and South Modesto. Negotiations picked up again about, in earnest about eighteen months ago. Uh, the SRWA held a joint workshop with the TID board. Uh, the board approved, uh, some terms and conditions in July of last year, and then TID developed a water cells agreement in the early part of this year. Um, that's been going back and forth in negotiations. Uh, we got pretty close, uh, at the end of June, and TID approved a draft in, uh, the middle of this month. And today it was approved, and I'll get to that in a second, but basically, I wanna give you an overview of what the agreement means, what it's all about. It's a fifty-year agreement. TID will provide thirty thousand acre feet of tr- of water to the SRWA, that's about thirty million gallons a day in urban terms, acre feet's kind of an ag term, but, so thirty, thirty million gallons of water a day. Uh, we will pay the TID irrigation tier four rate, so that's twenty dollars an acre foot. This is probably the cheapest water in California for a drinking water plant you'll, you'll likely ever see. Um, there's a big clause in there that gives parity between ag and urban users, which basically means in dry years where the farmers get cut back, the city folks get cut back in an equal amount. So we're always on the same basis as the agricultural users. Um, and then in dry years, where there's, uh, less than normal irrigation, the cities provide some water back to TID. And there's a formula for that, and I'll explain that a little bit. And then one of the other offers, one of the other, um, uh, parts of the deal is every year, the City of Turlock will provide two thousand acre feet of recycled water to TID. And so, basically, a normal year is when TID growers get forty-eight inches of water to their properties. Um, and then when there's reduction, when, so when TID farmers are allocated less than forty-eight inches, the cities get cut back in a similar percentage manner. So, that's a fancy graphic, okay. So, in a normal year, we provide no offset water, but we do provide two thousand acre feet of recycled water to TID. So that's a thirty thousand acre feet, uh, uh, TID provides thirty thousand acre feet, and that's in a year when there's forty-eight inches of irrigation water to the farmers. In a year where, where TID's farmers are cut back, say their allotment is thirty-six inches, that's a twenty-five percent reduction. The SRWA will get twenty-two thousand five hundred acre feet of water, and we'll provide back, um, half of that in offset water, so eleven thousand two hundred and fifty acre feet in offset water, of which two thousand acre feet is that recycled water. And then again, this is similar scenario, if there's cut back in, by fifty percent in twenty-four inch allotment, uh, we'd get fifteen thousand acre feet of, of offset water, we'd provide a similar amount back. So what's one of the project benefits? It'll help us meet our water demands, if you've got up early in the morning recently and you turn on your faucet, you'll see that the pressures aren't that great right now, our, our groundwater system is struggling. Um, it will, it will provide a recharge to our aquifer by, by pumping less and receiving surface water, expect the aquifer to recover, which not only is a good thing, it's also a new state requirement to bring our aquifers into sustainable groundwater management, so that's a good thing. Um, for TID, it provides some benefits to the, to Torrey River fishery, allows them to increase flows in the Torrey River that get pulled out downstream in the, at the infiltration gallery. So rather than releasing a Don Pedro into their canal system, it'll stay in the river longer, which is a benefit to the Torrey River fishery. And it also allows the cities and TID to diversify their, their water supply portfolio. Right now, we're a groundwater-only system, it's a diminishing resource, we're having water quality challenges, this incre- increases our portfolio, so we don't have, we no longer have all our eggs in one basket. And so, things that get finished up today, last, uh, at your last meeting, the city council approved, uh, providing up to two thousand acre feet of recycled water in considera- for consideration of the agreement with the, with the TID. Um, the SRWA board approved the water cells agreement last Thursday, and then TID finalized that deal this morning. So, um, we're not there yet, we're a long way away, we've gotta, you know, finance, build the project, do some additional studies, but this is a big milestone in the process of getting a reliable, uh, drinking water supply for Turlock for, you know, along the long-term future. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on that project.
Uh, thank you so much, one of the most complex water updates, uh, we've received so far, so we appreciate it. Any, uh, question or comments from the council? Yes, Councilman Asamoah.
Mike, it wasn't clear, at the beginning of the presentation, I, it seemed like you alluded to that TID would build a facility, or have we decided that, or?
The, the Stanislaus Regional Water Authority would, would build, operate, and maintain the facility.
Okay, great.
It's a little bit different from the City of Modesto, MID, where, where actually MID operates a facility.
Right, okay, great. Um, second question is, in, in terms of offset water, do we know, when was the last time that TID had a, a normal year, they had normal allocation? Or how often, I mean, I mean, obviously, the last couple of years, we've been in a drought, but-
It's difficult, yeah, when we, when we modeled this, we looked at like a twenty-year scenario, and basically twelve to thirteen years out of twenty, they get a normal year.
Okay.
And then usually the cutbacks aren't as dramatic as you've seen in the last few years.
Okay.
They might get a forty-two inch allotment, or a forty-four inch allotment.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Uh, from the public, any other questions or comments from the public? I think this is a topic we'll come back to, uh, so I'll bring it back and, uh, move on. Thank you so much, Director Cook. Public participation, is anyone from the audience, uh, this is a time set aside for members of the public to directly address the council on any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council, and to address the council on any item on tonight's agenda, including consent counter items. You'll be allowed five minutes, uh, for your comments. If you wish to speak regarding an item on the agenda, you may be asked to defer your remarks until the council addresses the matter. Uh, no action or discussion may be undertaken on any item, not appearing on the posted agenda, except that council may refer the matter to staff or request it to be placed on a future agenda. We have blue cards in the back that you can sign up for, uh, you don't have to use these, but we'll start off with Sarah Bigler, if she's here.
Good evening. Okay, the reason I'm here at this meeting is because, um, a letter that was left on the doorknob of a vacant house that received some sidewalk repair, um, said that this meeting would be a place to make a statement about this. So otherwise, I would assume that I would go to whatever department is appropriate to register my complaint.
Would you like to speak to that on, uh, item seven A, when we get to it, or would you?
Oh, I, I don't know, I, I've never done this, so.
How about this, we're going to be, uh, looking for approval to establish a lien for payment for repair of costs of certain maintenance and curbs, gutters, sidewalks, and I think that this would encompass that. I'm gonna look at the city attorney, is this separate?
If I can just ask a few clarifying questions-
Sure.
-um, to see if it is independent of the action item that we're going to take. Are you, you, uh, any of the property owners for forty-five eighty Cherry Blossom Lane? Or eight eighty-one West Main Street?
Yes, yes, okay.
Are you eight, eight eighty-one West Main Street?
That's the house, I don't live there.
Okay.
Um, it's-
That would be considered under seven, item seven A, so the mayor may request that you defer your remarks.
Okay, alright.
If, if you'd like, you, you know, if, if you'd like, we can take it up at that time, uh, unless you're more comfortable doing it right now, it's your, your option.
I don't, so it's my option?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
We'll just proceed, huh? Keep going.
All right, if that's okay. Um, all right. I did not receive a letter stating that this was an issue that I needed to take care of. The amount that I would be assessed for is eight hundred ninety-six dollars. The area that was repaired was three feet by four feet and three feet from the property I would think that I should receive a letter before, especially when we're talking about that kind of an amount. To me, that seems exorbitant for that area of cement. And the city does know my address, so hanging it on a doorknob is a little precarious.
Absolutely. So Mrs. Bigler, if you'd like to stick around for the next item, I will take these as comments for public participation, but I think that your input on that item, when it comes up, would be very valuable to the discussion. So if you'd like to stick around as well, that'd be great.
All right. It won't be a long, long time.
No, no, well, in fact, what we'll do is we're moving a couple of items. We'll move it up a little closer, okay?
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Sorry for the confusion. Milt Treewyler, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, and fellow citizens. I brought my Turlock water bills here tonight to share with you. First of all, I did a comparison between 2015 and 2013 for the first six months of the year. These are my actual bills here. And what I did in 2013, I was using two hundred and eighty-four gallons per day. This year, I used ninety-seven gallons per day over that period of time. That's a sixty-six percent reduction in water use. So I just wanted to share that with you. I also wanted to share with you my June water usage. Two thousand thirteen, well, actually, the usage, I reduced it seventy-four percent this last month from two thousand thirteen. I wanted to talk about water issues. The state has mandated the city of Turlock reduce water consumption by thirty-two percent because of the drought. At the last council meeting, we learned that in June, our water usage was down just twenty percent. Our, out of the total water usage in our city, industry is using twenty to twenty-five percent of our water in the city, and industrial use went up eight percent this last month. On News Radio KCBS, I heard in June that Livermore reduced their water usage by forty-eight percent, and that Santa Clara County reduced theirs by thirty-six percent. Both of these cities have industries. Recent, well, actually, it's already been mentioned, and Mayor, I commend you for signing the water agreement and getting that taken care of. We've been working on this for years, and it's very good to see it being done. And it's going to allow our city, of course, as Michael's already stated, to use surface water from the Toolumbe River for domestic use, reducing our dependence on groundwater basin. The Turlock Journal reported, according to you, Mayor, all options are open on the table when it comes to funding the estimated one hundred and fifty-one to two hundred million dollar project. I understand, I realize that's not all the city of Turlock's responsibility. But anyway, all options are on the table, including water rate hikes, and the council will look at this rate in fall and the impact it will have on us locally. And I'm looking forward to workshops on this subject so that we can get all the citizens of Turlock together, the staff, and do like we did, look at this from forty thousand feet up and get a good perspective of what needs to be done. I did conclude in this handout that I gave to you, the water charge, commodity charge for each customer class. If you look at that, this is 2012, full year 2012. Water was costing us, according to this, a dollar twenty-seven per thousand gallons. We were charging our citizens a dollar seventy-one per thousand gallons. We were charging our businesses a dollar twenty-eight per thousand gallons. We were charging industry just forty-one cents per thousand gallons. So I think this should be brought up in our discussion and workshops when we come to this point, and I'm looking forward to it. The last thing I wanted to do was bring to your attention a book that I just pub, just purchased. I got this on Amazon. You can get it for Kindle. It was just published here in 2015. And the last portion of this is on global warming. I gave a little, a review for the council as to who this person is. He's a scientist, and it's a good read. I don't want to say anything about it. It's something that, you know, to gain knowledge of this issue, this is something that all council members should read. I'm willing to loan you my book. I just finished it today, actually, that section. And it's very insightful, and we've got to have knowledge before we can make good decisions, and this provides us with good knowledge. Thank you very much. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Any questions? All right, thank you so much. Any other members of the public like to address the council at this time? If not, I will close public participation. Moving on to four A, declaration of conflicts of interest and disqualifications. Looking to my left and my right, seeing none. Moving on to four B, disclosure of ex parte communications. Public hearing item seven A is a quasi-juicial proceeding, so the council should disclose the following information if applicable. State for the public record of the nature of the communication with whom the ex parte communication was made, and a brief statement as to the substance of the communication. Left and right, seeing none. We'll move on to consent calendar. Are there any items to be removed from the consent calendar tonight? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Second.
We have motion by, motion by Councilmember Booblock, seconded by Councilmember Nocemeno to approve the consent calendar as is. Click, please, call the roll.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Nocemeno?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblock?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to final readings, we have none, and I will take out of order eight E. It is an item to request, request to accept the community grant ad hoc subcommittees recommended... No, we're moving on to eight E. I'm going to take it out of order. Request to accept the community grant ad hoc subcommittees recommended changes to the community event and activities grant eligibility criteria and application, and directing staff to apply the updated eligibility criteria and application to the 2015-16 community event and activities grant funding cycle. I would like to note, before Director Van Gilder starts, that there is a green sheet, so there are some corrections added. And good evening, Allison.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item before you, as the mayor stated, is essentially the work of the subcommittee in reviewing the guidelines in regard to the community event and activities grant program. A lot of time was spent to really take a look at what we want from this program in terms of the types of events that are funded and encouraged in the community. And so really appreciate Councilmember Jacob and Councilmember Nocemeno's time in reviewing the guidelines and, and really guiding staff in terms of, you know, trying to come up with the best product that we can for this program. And so before you tonight is essentially a revise of the original grant application. We've struck out the items that have been removed since the last time that the application was used, and we also highlighted the new information that has been added to the application. With that, we're asking for some direction tonight in terms of whether or not council wants to adopt these changes so that staff can then be directed to move forward with essentially re-initiating the application period for those that were already in the process. We're excited to move forward and have the process take place, and so as soon as we get that direction from you, staff's happy to move forward with that. I, at this point, I'd like to ask the subcommittee to share their comments with, you know, what you found in the process, and I think you're probably the best to speak on that. Thank you.
Councilmember Nocemeno?
Well, I, I also want to thank Councilmember Jacob, really took a leadership role in the ad hoc committee in revising the application process and the requirements. We feel that this is a, that it represents the desire of the council to support events in our community that really do give back to the community in terms of attracting individuals who are going to stay in hotels and spend money in town, and I think that is the intent of these funds, and also to encourage these types of activities and new activities to come to our community. We feel that these guidelines achieve that goal. And with that, I'll turn over to Councilmember Jacob.
So likewise, I want to thank you, Councilmember Nocemeno, for all the time that you put into this as well. Of course, Allison and Eric and Pedro and Roy, it was kind of a team effort. Something that was at the forefront of my mind as I was working on this was that although the funding for this originates from the TOT tax, it really is general fund dollars, and so I think we need to be very responsible in the way that we are distributing general fund dollars, because of course, that can be used for any number of things, public safety, any number of things that are very important to our community as well. So I think that we have come up with a process that further enables the commission, the Parks Arts and Recreation Commission, to really be, do all the legwork moving forward in terms of hashing out the applications and making sure that only the very best applicants are approved for funding. We did some other technical modifications, as you can see, I'm looking at my fellow council members. We updated the score sheet to, down from fourteen to ten questions, to give each question a little bit more weight, and making sure that they really are addressing what I believe our goals are and, and what we want to achieve with this funding. So again, thanks, Allison and your team, for all your hard work.
I don't, I don't know, so as the lead of the subcommittee, Councilmember Nocemeno, you want to walk us through the main things that you decided to change?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So if you look through your green sheet here, one of the things that we changed was there was an allowance for a maximum of ten percent for each grant awarded that could be allocated to administrative or personnel costs, and we struck that out and added a requirement that grant funds may not be allocated or used for administrative or personnel costs. We feel that these funds should be used to promote the event, to attract more attendees, and that was more appropriate use. And obviously, there are other uses, but we feel that personnel costs and administrative costs wouldn't necessarily benefit the community as much as using those funds for other items. We also added a requirement that to be eligible for funding all the events and activities had to take place within the boundaries. It says set forth in Exhibit A, which Exhibit A basically shows the city boundaries of the city of Turlock, but includes areas such as the fairgrounds, for example, which apparently are technically not within the city of Turlock. But we, we want to include basically anything within the exhibit, which is basically what most people would consider the city of Turlock, even if it's a county island or something that exists within the boundaries of the city. We also changed the requirements to set a cap on the amount that each activity or each application could be awarded at five thousand dollars. We feel it's appropriate to try to fund as many events as possible, and that five thousand dollars is a, is a good amount for any event, and it would help us support more causes and more events throughout the community. We also put a place to limit on an event or activity that should not exceed fourteen consecutive days. We felt that the intent of this fund, these funds, were not to supplement the, the cost of ongoing operations, that it really is to support kind of one-time or, you know, annual events. And so we thought that that requirement was important. And then we also added that grant recipients have to complete a post-event report within sixty days of the event or activity, and basically allow park staff to, to assess the event and provide feedback the following year as to whether or not that event lived up to its promises. I think there were some minor changes in the, the grant application. We sort of moved some things around. We wanted to put an emphasis on whether or not the event was being sponsored or put on by a nonprofit or for-profit, and then I think that...
Does that weigh into the selection criteria? Can you explain?
Yeah, it, it's not necessarily a ways, it doesn't have any impact on the scoring. We wanted it to just be, feature at the top of the application, because we feel that's something important the Parks Committee, Parks Arts and Recreation Commission should be aware of going into the event. We just feel it's an appropriate disclosure. And then the biggest change is actually on the application, the scoring sheet itself. And so the scoring sheet, there was an original format created by staff, and it was a very helpful tool, I think, for the commission in scoring these events. Councilmember Jacob worked very hard to revise this scoring sheet and to simplify it and really kind of prioritize some of the things that we thought were important, and making sure that, one of the things we wanted to make sure is, you know, there are certain events that we think, hey, that's, that's a great event, we should support it. But what is, is the amount that they're asking for relative to the event, is it appropriate? There are certain events that we'd certainly want to support, but maybe we don't think that they necessarily need the full five thousand dollars. Maybe a thousand dollars would be enough for them. And so we wanted to add some qualifying questions, and it would allow the, the commission to make that assessment through completing the score sheet. And so what you have before you is the work of the ad hoc subcommittee. I want to thank the mayor for appointing Councilmember Jacob, and I, it was great to work with our staff. They were absolutely crucial to this, and thank you for putting up with our schedules and working on this. And I think what we have before us is a good process and procedure and guidelines for the community grants program.
Anything else to add? Covered it. All right, any questions or comments from the council? If not, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Any public comments on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for consideration. Yes, Councilmember Booblock, of course.
So I just want to make sure that any, anybody who's a potential recipient appreciates that this is a new process for us and that we're, we're not trying to make it more cumbersome for you, and if you have to redo, that we, we appreciate it's a problem, and just work with us so that we can get this right and make the best financial decisions that we can for the taxpayers' money. And as well, I want the commission, if they're watching or listening, to know that we don't want to micromanage, we just want to make sure that we make it just as efficient for them to, to process all of this. Thank you.
Yeah, and if I could echo some of those comments, I, I really do appreciate the commission's work on this. I, I think we failed to provide them enough direction. We recognize that, and so we, we work to provide them adequate direction. We certainly don't want to give them a task without, without proper direction, and I hope that they have that now. And one of the things I did want to bring to the council's attention, I think we had decided that because we, we moved, we changed the process, that only the applicants who had originally applied would be eligible to reapply under this year's grants, and just want to make the council aware of that, in case anyone has any issues with that. But again, thank you, Allison and your staff, for your work on this.
Absolutely.
And on that point, clarification, people that have previously applied can revamp and re-edit their applications, correct?
Yes, essentially, we'll be asking them to complete the new application, and so if they're, you know, there's a benefit in that, being able to kind of enhance, you know, some of that information. I, I think that we'll, we'll get some good participation, and to clarify, we will be inviting back both tiers. And so all of the applicants essentially who applied last time will be invited to reapply, and the commission will hear all of those.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none? What's the pleasure of the council?
I will happily introduce the motion as set forth on the agenda, item eight E.
Second.
I'll give it to Councilmember Jacob. So we have motion by Councilmember Nocemeno, seconded by Councilmember Jacob. Click, please, call the roll.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Nocemeno?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblock?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Thank you so much. All right, moving back to the original schedule, public hearings. Moving on to item seven A, request for approval establishing a lien for payment for repair costs of certain maintenance of curbs, gutters, sidewalks, curb costs, curb cuts, and driveway approaches that are out of repair. Director Van Gilder.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item before you is essentially the notification that we did have two properties that we have had to make repairs at their properties for out-of-repair sidewalks. We did go through our normal process of notification in both instances, and unfortunately, did not receive contact from the property owners, so we had to proceed. I am happy to answer any questions in regard to either of these properties, should you have any questions. So tonight, you have before you for consideration the sidewalk repair that was done at forty-five eighty Cherry Blossom Lane, as well as eight eight-one West Main Street.
Any questions or comments for Director Van Gilder? Yes, Councilman Nocemeno.
Allison, I'd just say, I think this question's going to come up. How do, how do we determine the, the amount of the assessment? What goes in?
That's essentially our staff's time and all the materials that go into making the repair. We do acknowledge that it is higher than what your average contractor would like... We do acknowledge that it is higher than what your average contractor would likely charge just because of the cost of our fully burdened hourly rates. And so in all circumstances, we do try to discourage property owners of, you know, relying on city staff to make the repairs because it's almost always more expensive than it would be to work with a local general contractor. And so I understand that sometimes those figures look a little out of whack. It's essentially what our fully burdened hourly rate equates to. We also have copies of time sheets associated with the repairs so we can track exactly how many hours are associated, as well as any receipts for materials that were purchased, concrete, things of that nature. You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Councilman Jacob and then Councilman Dehart, is that okay?
Allison, can you sort of help walk us through the process? How many notifications are sent, how those are delivered, before we get to actually doing the work?
Yes, I'm happy to do that. So initially, when we receive the notification that there's an out-of-repair sidewalk, we ask our engineering department to, well, first of all, we put the signs out so that people are notified that there is an out-of-repair sidewalk, and we hope to try to avoid further incidents, accidents, trip and falls, things of that nature. We then immediately follow up with our engineering department, and they send out their inspectors to go out, evaluate the sidewalk, spray paint the areas that need to be addressed, and they forward that information back to our department. A letter, an initial letter, is then sent out with pictures of the out-of-repair sidewalk, giving direction on next steps. If we don't hear back from the property owner, we do send a second notice. We generally do that after thirty days, we send that second notice out. That second notice does give a ten-day turnaround request, as required by the Streets and Highways Code. If we don't hear from them after that second notice is mailed and posted on the property, we are then forced to take steps to get the sidewalk repaired. And so essentially, in these cases that are before you tonight, that's essentially what has occurred. We, along the way, if at any time the property owner contacts us, essentially the process is halted, and we're, you know, happy to try to coordinate and work that out. We give multiple extensions if that's necessary in terms of the need to kind of coordinate efforts or gather funding, things of that nature. As we've talked about before, we also have financial aid assistance available for families that qualify. And so those are sort of the resources, and that's the process that we follow. Unfortunately, sometimes we do find ourselves in this situation where we've had to take it all the way and ultimately make that repair. But we are always willing to work with the property owner, even at this particular point, in that we are willing to work out payment plans and to avoid it going to lien.
Okay, so follow-up questions to that would be, in both of, well, in one of these properties, the name and address of the owner and the name and the address of the property are different. Are those first and second letters that you just mentioned, are they sent directly to the property or are they sent to the property owner's address?
We go by the address that's on record for the county parcel. And so if the owner is not living at the residence, it will be mailed to whatever address is on file for the property owner. But we also follow that up with a posting at the physical address as well.
Thank you. Councilman Dehart, sorry, I skipped you twice, I'm recognizing it.
I'll get over it, mayor. Allison, just in additional follow-up to Councilmember Jacob's question. When you send out a letter, method, could you bring us up to speed on that? Is that a certified return receipt? Is it a bulk rate mail? Is it, how is that done?
It just goes out regular US mail. It's not a certified-type letter where somebody has to sign.
Okay. Okay. I guess I would only follow up with that by saying that if we're going to be considering fully burdened hourly rates for our employees, an extra dollar or two or ten for a certified letter, return receipt, may be worth our time.
Sure.
Just, I'll set that aside now.
No, I think that's a good suggestion.
Secondly, it also seems to me that although we're working with a resident or an owner for a period of time past the potential ten-day notice, if they've contacted us and have shown desire or to work things out or whatever, is our exposure, our liability, any greater if somebody steps up at receipt of the letter? Or less versus the person that never responds? In other words, do we have a legal liability that applies from day one or throughout the whole process? Is either circumstance any different, do you know?
We do have legal liability, and I'm going to, I think our city attorney would like to comment on that. But as part of the Streets and Highways Code, there is an obligation on the governing authority to respond once they become aware of the out-of-repair sidewalk. I'll let Phaedra elaborate.
Maybe I can break it up into two components. In terms of liability, if an injury occurs after we have notice, then we would be liable for any injuries. Notice occurs through actual notice or constructive notice. So when we receive a call that there's an out-of-repair sidewalk, that is the reason we put out the signs. By putting up the signs that say it's an out-of-repair sidewalk or an uneven sidewalk, that provides notice to the public to be careful. So that mitigates our liability to some degree. However, there are certain responsibilities under the Streets and Highways Code that are mandatory responsibilities. First of all, the initial postcard notice is a statutory requirement. The follow-up notice is a statutory requirement. The fact that we look at the last equalized roll is a statutory requirement. If we don't receive a response, the statute is very clear that we shall repair the sidewalk. Where you get the discretion is when it comes to the council for imposition of the cost of repair. And so as I read the statute, it is shall until, like I said, it comes before the council for determining the cost of repair. And so because it uses the word shall, it leaves very little discretion on the part of the staff not to comply with the statutory code. And we spent a great deal of time a couple of years ago making sure that we met all of the statutory requirements from a procedural perspective, so that we had all the right notices, that we're noticing to the right addresses, et cetera. So I think it, the liability, statutory liability for following a certain procedure versus the third-party liability for a trip and fall, I'd like to bifurcate those.
Well, that was the intent of my question, so thanks for clarifying that. But I'd like to go back to whether it's a letter or whether it's a postcard and notification, that term, notification. Is it that neighbor Jane Smith, two doors down, calls the city and says, hey, my neighbor has got a bum sidewalk? Do we catch that as we drive around picking up garbage? Do we, I mean, how do we get notified? Is it a, is it a formal notification? Is there a requirement for a formal notification? Help me understand that one.
Typically, we receive notification one of two ways. One, we have a concerned citizen make a phone call to notify that, you know, they were maybe walking, you know, down the street, and they noticed this out-of-repair sidewalk. Unfortunately, we also get those notifications when people actually trip and fall. There, we unfortunately don't have resources to have a proactive effort to go out and inspect and things of that nature. It's pretty much when we are contacted from someone, you know, an outside customer.
Okay, so it's, however that happens, it does. Now, as far as the communication, postcard, letter?
It's actually a letter. Phaedra used the term postcard because that's the reference in the code. But we have, on our letter, we have the title of, I think it's postal notice, postal notice, not postcard, postal notice. And so that's what, but it's a form letter.
There's going to be a lot, mayor, that comes up at a later point in time. And I'm just trying to set a little bit of groundwork here because there are a couple of concerns to me when we, when we assess or we attach a lien on someone's property to these dollar values, and we don't really know if they got the letter. We find out if they call and say help, but we really have no idea if they don't. And so I'm a little concerned about that in terms of, and this is not to cast dispersions on our fine USPS service, but by the same token, stranger things have happened. My wife was drafted in nineteen eighty-three, so long after that was disbanded. So I'm just trying, you know, I want to make sure that we're communicating, communicating formally and responsibly. And perhaps we, we'll have more dialogue, like I said, but I think that, you know, for right now, just as it's part of the record, I'd like to include that.
You don't happen to be the chair of the Ad Hoc Committee on Sidewalk Repair and Tree Maintenance, do you?
I am.
You are? Oh, okay, yeah, you are, yeah. That's why I appointed you that. All right, thank you so much. I'm going to open it up, if there's no further comment or question from the council, I'm going to open it up for public participation. I'm going to ask Ms. Bigler if she'd like to come up and speak again.
Pardon me for not being with it enough to bring this up because now it's like one of those no duh. The address and the name on here, reference to this property, is the previous owner. So I would assume that that's where the letters went. I've owned the property since the middle of November, and this property has, in my opinion, much bigger issues than one little square of sidewalk, which I don't see, I'm familiar with sidewalk hazards. I live where there are the sycamore trees, they raise the sidewalks, so I've seen that. I don't think this was, I mean, I don't believe this was a really bad hazard. And the city does have my address, so I don't know. You know, when you buy a property, do you need to come down and tell the city? How would, what would have been the appropriate thing for me to let this? I just figured that it would be public knowledge of who owned it.
We appreciate, city attorney, should I let it to you or should I let, Allison? You got it? Got it.
In looking at the file, I think we have an unfortunate circumstance of timing. The original letter of notification was mailed on October twenty-ninth of fourteen. The follow-up letter, after no response, was mailed on November twentieth of fourteen. And so if Ms. Bigler is saying that she took over the property in mid-November, we would have no notification because we go off of the record that the county has. And it would not have been a common question for staff to ask, has the property sold over the last few months? That's just, I know, I can see that that's probably what happened here. Something else to maybe run through the filter before we actually take that step, if we did have a property transfer, which is going to be one of the components that we're going to discuss. So I think that kind of clarifies how we got here and where the confusion lies. I think, you know, the fact that we don't have many of these liens that come before you, I hope demonstrates to you that, you know, we do try to work with our property owners, but in this case, it was very unique in that the prior property owner clearly thought maybe their responsibilities had transferred and did not make any effort because it was not Mrs. Bigler who was addressed in those letters, it was the prior property owner. So the failure to communicate really was on the previous owner, not on Ms. Bigler's.
Thank you.
I have a question for-
Yeah, Councilman Nocimento.
Also, you said the letters were sent, I think, ten-twenty-nine and eleven-twenty of fourteen?
Correct.
So when would have a notice been placed on the physical property? The first notice and second, or just the second?
You mean the sign?
Um, the-
Oh, no, on the second notice.
Second notice.
The second notice. The first letter is really a courtesy notice. We try to, you know, try to, you know, send something that's more of a notification. You have an out-of-repair sidewalk. The second letter is really when the process begins, the formal process begins. So that also involves a physical posting on the property. So if there was an issue with the property being in transfer at that time, I'm not sure if anybody was living there at the time, but it didn't appear that way. And so, you know, I can only think that maybe there was no one there to see that physical. But as I stated earlier, the letters were mailed to the original property owner, who I believe lived in Daly City.
I guess part of my concern is on, just on that transit, I see a couple of realtors in the audience and that if the property owner was notified, they didn't disclose that to the buyer. It's a little bit concerning, but obviously outside of our purview, but thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the audience, it's public participation? Any other questions or comments from the audience? Yes, please come forward.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers, folks in the audience. I don't know what direction you're going to go with this, but sitting there as a citizen, this happens. Communication is a two-way street. I really appreciate what Councilmember Dehart has said, that there really seems to me need to be some type of process where you're acknowledging reception of that communication. And I sure would hope that, I'm not sure what your options are tonight, but I hope we would make this right by the Biglers. I mean, this would be, to me, a fiasco and really a travesty if we don't. So strong feelings, I'm sure, and I'm fairly confident that others would feel that way. And again, I appreciate Councilmember Dehart's comments. It's hard, you know, looking back with hindsight, but I hope there's ways we can, you know, chalk this up for lesson learned, so to speak, and improve our processes. So not like it was a bad intent, but I hope we can rectify this, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the public? I thought the chief had something. Close public participation and bring it back to the council, Councilman Dehart, and then, yeah, is that okay? Yeah, Councilman Dehart.
Um, do, we've, in a very public way, provided audience from Mrs. Bigler regarding this particular property that we've been discussing now for too long. Do we have similar sort of record or dialogue that we can generate with respect to the second property? I'm really more concerned about, have we received protest? Have we received willingness to work with us, requests to work with the owner? I understand we've got a policy, we have a procedure, we have an ordinance, and we have a state law, and we have all of these things that we have to comply with, and really, not us, but the property owner. But my concern is, is that in a very public way, Mrs. Bigler has asked to work with us. And so I'm really kind of concerned that, while we do have an ordinance and we do have process and policy, that she not be held accountable to a standard different than other people. We can't establish policy or manage by exception, and yet it just seems to me that we ought to be able to come up with something specifically from Mrs. Bigler at this point, that, and perhaps that's just in not voting or deferring vote and requesting that you get together and work things out in her specific case. In the other case, I don't know if there's any additional information we have available on the other property.
We have received no contact or correspondence from the other property owner.
And they are local, as I recall.
Correct.
And in town, and, oh. So I feel badly for that particular individual, but I think for Mrs. Bigler here, I would have concern.
Kind of stole my thunder, but okay.
She's done it to me.
That's true. So what I would probably ask, and this is no reflection on staff or anything, is that perhaps that we go ahead and continue this, find out, and maybe make a little bit more effort to make contact with the other party and establish some sort of communication standard that's a little higher than it was previously, and let you and perhaps Ms. Norton work with Ms. Bigler on what would be a successful outcome.
Sure.
So my motion would be to, I guess, continue or, or? Continue both and then bring back whatever needs to be brought back, presumably. That's my motion.
City attorney, do you want to clarify? That's on the up and up?
If you want to continue both, yeah, we'll follow whatever direction the council wants.
So it sounds like there's a motion to continue both and to allow for staff to look at these two instances and then to also come up with recommendations on bolstering the communication with property owners, which I think will be supported in the Ad Hoc Committee. But anyhow, Councilmember Dehart?
And I'd just like to thank you, Allison, for tracking this and for the work that's been at the engineers, et cetera, et cetera. And I'll second it. Uh, and I'll second it.
All right. So, we have a motion by Councilmember Boo Block, seconded by Councilmember DeHart. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Nasmento?
Yes.
Councilmember Boo Block?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries five to zero. So, for Ms. Bigler, um, the item will be continued, uh, to our next meeting, which will be, uh, August eighth, but, uh, we encourage you to work with Staff Director Van Gilders, already back there, talking to you. That's what we like to see. All right, thank you. Okay. Oh, sorry, the first meeting in Aug- or in, uh, in August, that's whatever date that is. Uh, moving on to item seven B, a request to add Turlock Municipal Code Title Eight, Chapter Seven, regarding expedited permitting procedures for small residential rooftop solar systems. Mr. Pachano?
Hi, good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Uh, the ordinance that we have in front of us today is, uh, something that has actually come to us by way of the, our, our California Legislature. It essentially all started back in, uh, two thousand and fourteen with what was called Assembly Bill Twenty One Eighty Eight. Uh, the intent of that bill was to encourage installation of, of PV systems. It's something that we all, as, as, uh, you know, residents of the state understand, and is, is a good thing. The, the basic premise is, is, is it has a lot of mandates within it, and that's what we're here about, is several of those mandates today. Uh, because it, uh, contained all these mandates, back in June of last year, I had actually sent to council a request to have a letter sent, um, you know, in conjunction with the, uh, the League of California Cities' request, that, uh, we oppose Assembly Bill Twenty One Eighty Eight, and that letter ultimately was approved by council and, and was sent. However, Assembly Bill Twenty One Eighty Eight ultimately did pass through the legislature and was signed by our governor, and then became part of our California Government Code. So, that puts us where we are today, uh, basic history. So, so what it does, it has these mandates in it, and one of them is that we develop and approve an ordinance, that's what we're here for tonight, uh, to streamline the permitting of small residential PV systems on or before September thirtieth, and that's why we're here again today, yes. Um, so, again, more mandates in, within that essentially requires the Building Department, um, to prioritize PV customers over all of our other customers. Uh, so, it's, it's, again, you know, we're, we're forced to deal with that. And with, within the ordinance was as, as required by the, uh, the, the state mandates, uh, we have to create a, a special permitting system just for PV systems, and these are ten kilowatt or less. Uh, for information of what, what a ten kilowatt system looks like, that's about thirty panels, that's a pretty good size, uh, system. Not sure if any, any members here have a, a system or not, but that's not, that's, that's not small by any stretch of the imagination. Um, beyond that, uh, we're supposed to develop a checklist that, uh, you know, allows the customers to use us as systems, and, and we, in order to comply and make their system eligible for this expedited process. The big question really comes down to what is expedited? Uh, as I read it, it could be anywhere from over the counter to three days, that would be considered expedited in, in, within the Building Department. My intention is to make it an over-the-counter process. Uh, I have already created the, uh, the, the form utilizing documents that were supplied to us through this system, and so I think we're about ready to go with that. Uh, however, we don't have to use it until September thirtieth, but we've actually started to try to understand this process, because there are other rules that have come along with it. As required, we'll accept electronic submittal, which is something that we've actually been looking forward to, and which we already accept electronic submittal of certain types of permits anyway. Um, electronic would be in the form of email, internet access, or even facsimile. We, we do still actually do get facsimile, um, requests on a regular basis from certain types of our contractors. Again, as required, it's going to give, we, we, we must give a written correction notice. This is something, again, that we're already taking care of. A lot of this system that's being created is something that is already in place within the city of Turlock, so it's, it, it, it's, again, it's part of the mandates. Uh, it's, I think a, a lot of this, the premise for this whole thing really does not apply to the city of Turlock. It applies to a lot of larger agencies that are, um, maybe by the customer's stance, being a little bit mistreated by, by various departments, uh, not going as fast as they want to go. We have a lot of solar contractors, the, uh, the leasing agents, that really, really want to push their product as fast as possible. Um, so, that's part of the system. And then the last one that really bothers the Building Department is the idea of a single inspection, which is required. A solar PV system, uh, there's a lot of power on your roof. You don't see it, but there, it's actually up there. With a single inspection, the normal inspection process is before the panels go on, the, uh, system is inspected, and then when the panels go on, you can't see anything anymore. So, with the way this law is written, we only get one inspection. So, haven't quite worked out how we're going to be able to deal with that through the inspection process, but that's something, you know, as, 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 as we must, we, we shall learn. Um, the, uh, Fire Department actually has their own safety inspection, that is completely separate from the Building Department's inspection, and is not considered part of that inspection. So, there's still, we, the Fire Department gets its inspection, as it always has, and they, uh, yeah, we coordinate quite well with the Fire Department on, on many different things, so this, this is something that probably should not affect the Fire Marshal or, or his staff. Um, and then the, the basic last thing is inspections must be performed at a timely manner. Again, this really doesn't apply to the city of Turlock. Timely matter, uh, they're, they're asking for it within five days. Right now, if a customer of ours was to call in by four P.M., we're going to, on any business day, we will be out there the next business day. That, that is just our standard practice, uh, and don't expect that to be a problem. What this really applies to would probably be larger counties that only inspect in certain areas on certain days of the week. It, it, this just doesn't apply to us. So, there's actually a tiny little bit of good news, there's no fiscal impact. Yes, that's the, the only thing I honestly say, say with that. So, that basically kind of gets you all up to date on it. It's not a great big ordinance, but it, it, it's here for us, and, and we're going to go ahead and take care of it. So, if you have any questions that I can possibly answer, if you have any comments you want to, you know, to pass on to me, I'd appreciate it.
Any questions or comments? Yeah, Councilman Nasmento.
So, my understanding of the legislation requires that, uh, in the case of the city of Turlock, that the inspection that's performed would have to be a joint inspection of building and fire?
No, that is incorrect. Uh, in the case of the city of Turlock, we do not have a agreement with our Fire Department, so they do not have to be a joint inspection. In many agencies, there is a, they have inspection agreements, and we don't actually have one of those, so it does not have to be a joint inspection. Sometimes we could do that. It's, it's a matter of coordination of, of staff members and, and how they, they do their inspections, so we are not required to do that.
So, you can, we are not required to, and you may identify that there's a benefit to separating those out to different stages and-
That, that's entirely possible, yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Jacob?
Uh, from a safety perspective, I'm trying to think through, if I was planning on installing solar panels on my roof, I probably wouldn't care to have it ex, done expedited if it means that it's, um, not being inspected well. Is that an option that we can provide to the customers to say, would you like us to come out before you have it installed, and then again afterwards, or can we give them an option to do it in expedited or non-expedited way?
The basic process i- is a two-step process. What we would normally do is they get half the installation in, that's where we, we would prefer to be there, at that time, before things are covered up. The, as you imagine, there, you know, these panels are up there, and there's, there's conduct, uh, conductors underneath them, and they go through the attic spaces and, and various different places, and that's when we really want to be able to look at, so where those are going, what's been cut. As, uh, these systems go down on your roof, uh, your roof is being drilled full of holes, are the, uh, you know, are the, uh, bolts that are being applied in there, have they been, uh, been given a sealant so that your roof doesn't leak? These are part of the things that we look at, you know, on your behalf as a customer. Uh, we certainly could, could do this for the customer, I would not have any problem if somebody asked for its two inspections. Uh, again, the contractor is not going to want that, because they're, they're in a hurry.
Any other questions, yeah, Councilman Nasmento?
Would it be possible for a, a building inspector to do a secondary inspection on behalf of the Fire Department? Is it?
Um, that's, we, we actually do look at two different things, but it certainly would be possible. And, again, if the, even if a second inspection is possible, half, if we go up there and we do find issues that need repair, a section, inspection is allowed by the, by the way the, uh, the legislation has been written. So, if they do fail in what, in whatever fashion, we're up to as many inspections as it takes at that point in time. So, it, it does not have to pass that first time, but the intent is, you know, by the legislation, that it expects it to pass that first time.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll open it for public comment. Anyone from the public like to adjust the counsel on this issue? Seeing none, I will, yes.
My name is Tracy Sunday. I live in North Turlock, and I thank you for, thank you, Mayor and Councilman. Uh, I think I, I personally already have solar energy on my home, and, uh, I think as a customer, I would prefer them inspect when they do the bolting to the roof with their mounting system, and I would prefer inspection after the equipment was put on. I don't know what their, you know, what the state legislation was trying to do with that, because it just seems like you would want to see that the installation was done correctly. I mean, that's, that would be me as a customer would want that. And I don't know if there's some way then that, uh, in, in, in working with the Fire Department, maybe the, the inspection of the final product could be a part of the Fire Department's responsibility, or they bring along a city person to do that. Uh, at the same time, the Fire Department expects, at the end, when they, they inspect the connections to the, uh, meters and all that, and how they're tied into the system on the roof. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? All right, I'm going to close public participation, bring it back to the council for consideration. Yes, Councilman Jacob?
So, one last comment. So, I think what, um, and just going off of the gentleman's remarks is, um, I, I think let's make it a point to offer that to the customers, saying that we're not, you know, we're not required to, but if you'd like to have the second inspection done for safety reasons or whatever, and I'm sure, I'm looking at, um, the City Attorney, that as long as they consent to having that second inspection, that we would be clear in terms of our meeting the requirements of, uh, this new law.
I could certainly ask that. I, I have no, no, no qualms about doing that. I think that's an excellent idea. It, it's a, it's a simple request, if you would like us to be out there more than once to, to view your entire project. I, I, I would expect some customers would accept that.
Quick, quick, point of clarification, does that change the staff report then about the fiscal impact, uh, to the city, since there's going to be two, or there would potentially be two, um, inspections?
Actually, it would not change it. Uh, there is other legislation that came out a couple of years ago, we actually have a maximum permit cost available on solar, solar permit, so they're actually a loss every time, anyway. It's just going to be a little, little less-
So, would it be a larger loss?
Yes, a little larger loss.
So, there would be a, a negative fiscal impact to the city, because manpower, man hours would be taken to go do a second-
To go along with the second inspection.
That's my question. City Manager, yes?
I, I believe you currently have gone out at least twice on every one of these-
Oh, yes, yes, currently, we're, we're designed for two.
And so, two inspections would reflect the status quo of what has happened, so actually one inspection would probably have a positive general fund or cost impact, but two has been the norm up to this point.
That's correct. It would be a, a po- this actually would be, in that way, it would be a positive, uh, for the, for the building, building fund.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? Yes.
I appreciate, um, your work in, in having to comply with these state mandates, and we, they kind of come at us fast and furious, and we have to respond, and I know it's not something that obviously we, we pose as a, as a city, this legislation, but now that it's, it's passed, we have to be good subjects, I suppose, and, uh, and, uh, respond in kind, and so I appreciate your, your work in trying to figure out how to implement this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Questions or comments? All right, was the pleasure the council. All right, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, yes.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Jacob, seconded by Councilmember Nasmento. Uh, clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes, motion carries five to zero. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Moving on to, uh, eight A, request to cancel the city council meeting scheduled for Tuesday, August twenty-fifth, two thousand and fifteen. I'm up. Uh, so, this council's been very active over the last couple of months. Uh, we started off in January with, uh, back-to-back meetings, uh, where on the second and fourth, uh, Tuesday of the month, we had a regular scheduled meeting, uh, to keep the lights on in Turlock, and on the other meetings, our other Tuesdays, the first and third, uh, we had workshops on public safety, on water, on, uh, the budget workshops, and, uh, so to recognize that, the, the months of, uh, increased workload and the very active nature of this council, um, I believe that we are accomplishing a lot in this meeting and the first meeting in August, and we will be able to accomplish what we need to on the first meeting in September. So, I think that, um, to give staff a small break and to give this council a small break, um, I'm moving to, uh, to, uh, cancel the meeting on Tuesday, August twenty-fifth. Uh, City Manager, do you have anything else to add?
We think it's a great idea, Mayor.
Let the record reflect that the City Manager is recommending this action. Uh, so is there, uh, council, uh, comment or question? Seeing none, I'll open it for the public. Any public comment or questions on this item? Bringing it back, was the pleasure the council.
Oh, that's-
All right, there's everyone motion and everyone seconded. So, uh, I have a motion by Councilmember Boo Block, seconded by Councilmember DeHart. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Don't get used to it, all right? That's all I got to say. Uh, moving on to eight B, request to adopt a post-construction standards plan for stormwater discharges for the new development and redevelopment. Director Pickock?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. The item before you is the approval of our post-construction standards for our new, uh, process that's been, uh, required by the, um, federal EPA as well as the State of California Water Resources Board. So, again, this is another one of those mandates. Uh, basically, the, um, EPA and the Water Quality, Water Resources Board has deemed that a stormwater runoff can be considered a significant source of water pollution that, that, uh, could affect our aquatic life and our public health. In two thousand and thirteen, the Water Quality Board adopted what's called the Phase Two, Small Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System, or MS Four, General Permit, that specifically required the city of Turlock to comply with these regulations. So, the regulations specify six minimum control measures to be developed. These are public education and outreach, public participation involvement, illicit discharges detection and elimination, construction site runoff control, post-construction storm water management program, and pollution prevention and good housekeeping. So, one of the tasks identified in year two of the permit is adoption of this document here that was, uh, considered, uh, Exhibit A in year packets. Um, this is to help assist our developers, our engineers, and our designers, as well as our, our plant examiners, to identify and utilize that this is a tool to, uh, design a system that's going to be in compliance with the MS Four permit. And the goal of, the goal of, is to, um, is to accomplish, the, the document accomplishes the goal through incorporation of low-impact development design standards, as well as what they call hydromodi-, hydromodification management techniques. So, essentially, the low-impact development, or LIDs, mitigate excessive runoff by the use of control measures, uh, that use evapotranspiration, infiltration, capture reuse, and biotreatment to mimic the natural runoff of water in our natural environment. So, in other words, we're going to store the water on-site, and we're going to utilize plant material to help clean the water. Hydromodification techniques basically says that we're going to do design techniques, that we're going to, whatever water that used to leave the site, we're going to maintain the water on the site when we develop, so that we don't increase the amount of water that leaves the site. So, essentially, what we're trying to do is look at the site as it is in its current condition, and when we do develop, or we do redevelop that site, and we do enhance it, we put, you know, asphalt, concrete, and so forth, we need to do certain techniques to keep the water, capture the water on-site, and ensure that we don't provide additional stormwater pollution to the environment. So, the DCAC did take a look at this document. Uh, it is quite extensive document, and it's one of these documents that we're going through a process of trying to fully understand it and build, build a system, uh, in place that will, as Eric alluded before, on the, on the solar, is we're trying to get it done in an over-the-counter situation. What I've tasked my staff to do is, is a permit, if it was an over-the-counter permit, I don't want this to affect that, I still want it to be an over-the-counter permit. If it's a five-day permit, I need it to be a five-day, uh, permit. So, we're in the process of mix modifications to how we do our business, to ensure that that happens, but while maintaining the MS Four. But tonight, what we're trying to, uh, what we're asking to do is adopt this plan, so we can move forward with, uh, meeting the state water quality control board requirements. If you have to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments for Director Pickock? Yes, Councilman Dehart.
Mike, it's, uh, I can't picture it in my mind. How do we hold water on-site?
Uh, what you'll, what you'll probably see and most likely are going to be in our normal landscape beds. Instead of just being a flat bed, it'll be depressed. And so, the water will be directed to these landscape, landscape beds. The water will be stored. I don't know if you've been out to, um, the Walnut School on Springer and Walnut Road. If you actually look at the parking lot, you'll see that the, the landscape grass areas are depressed. So, what you're trying to do is you pull the water into these depressed areas and as the water runs through or stores in there, the grass or other plant material, there's actually microbial bacterias that actually live on those plants and they actually can pull and clean the water in a somewhat manner as the water passes by or sits there. So, that's, the idea is to continue to, I guess, enhance the nature's ability to clean the water.
And that happens before it goes down the drain, or?
The idea is to try to prevent most of the water from getting to the drain. But there, if, in high events or large events, the water will be allowed to, um, go into the drain and bypass the, the process. But the idea is on a typical storm, the water will remain on-site.
Were they thinking about El Nino when they wrote this?
I, I doubt they were considering El Nino when they wrote this. But, uh, yeah, it's one of those things that you will, there will, there will be times in which the, the system will be totally overwhelmed and it will go into the streets and will go into the storm sewers and we will have status quo. Uh, the, one good thing about the city of Turlock is we have no natural waterways. Uh, so, our chances of polluting our waters in the US are very small. And, uh, so, it shouldn't be that big of an issue for us, um, but it, it is a requirement that we adopt this, this plan.
Councilman Nascimento.
Mike, so it sounds like in reading the report that you guys are confident that they can accommodate these bioswells and other features in the existing landscape requirements of the city of Turlock?
Based on the calculations, they may end up having to slightly enlarge them or depends on the, you know, the site specifics. They may have to, uh, you know, obviously, you don't want to have a situation where they're too deep or too steep because then you have maintenance issues with the plant material. So, we're going to have to, it's going to be a, a, a learning curve for both the design community as well as the city to come up with that process that is most beneficial to everyone.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? None, open it to the public. Any questions or, questions or comments for Director Pickock? Yes, please come up. You know the routine, to the microphone, yeah. Are you going to make Director Pickock prove that the microbial bacteria actually live on these?
No, he, he knows about that and that's, he's generally, I mean, he's correct. Okay. No, my only question is, how large of a, a lot does this apply to? I mean, are we talking about school grounds? Are we talking about a single-family house or dwelling? Well, how large is a lot? That's my only question.
I'm going to take a stab at this. I have Garner Reynolds here for these technical questions. Uh, I believe it's 2,500 square feet and larger. So, if you have a, um, you know, a, a Chevron station, it was, it's going to apply to that. So, you, pretty much anything that's commercial is going to apply to.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions or comments? See, none, I'll bring it back to the council. Was the council's, uh, was the pleasure of the council?
I'll introduce the item.
Do I have a second? We have a motion by Councilmember Nascimento, seconded by Councilmember Dehart. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes, motion carries five to zero. Thank you so much. Uh, moving on to the next item, uh, request to direct staff to proceed with option two and fund the design, inspection, and construction of the Broadway City Hall parking lot utilizing capital facility fees, general government, and direct staff to prepare a request for proposal for a downtown parking study and master plan utilizing capital facility fees. Director Pickock.
Uh, following the relocation of the city hall to this building in the late 90s, the city purchased the property across the street at 129 South Broadway. Uh, it was the site of an old retail building that had been demolished. Uh, so, what was left was a little bit of asphalt and some, uh, concrete slab. Um, the city did do some, a little bit of touch-up work just to make the parking lot look kind of like a parking lot. Uh, but it was never improved to any city standard, nor was it really added to what I would call the nine, um, dedicated city parking lots within our communities downtown. So, we're, we've had a lot of interest in improving the, uh, the, uh, the site. It is quite, um, ugly. And so, I, I put together two different plans, uh, staff put together two different plans. Uh, option one is, um, a real simple maintenance project. It's milling off an inch and a half of asphalt, putting an inch and a half of asphalt back. Uh, it really does not address, uh, anything that has to do with the storage, uh, stormwater that currently stands whenever we have issues there. It's not adding any lighting for safety purposes. It's not adding any landscaping. It's just make it look like a new asphalt layer with a new paint on it. Uh, it would get us 41 parking stalls, which is what we have today, and it would cost about $110,000. Option two, uh, would be the full demolition and reconstruction of the parking lot to city standards. It would reduce the number of parking stalls down to 32. Uh, the reason for that is by adding the landscape and the bioswells, per the MS4, as well as the lighting and the stormwater management, uh, and add, and the drive aisles that are currently in existing one or not are too narrow, so we have to widen them out to city standard. By doing all this, we do lose nine parking stalls. Um, this works out, if you look at it from a standpoint of the downtown parking lots, which you see in gray here, uh, that nine would work out to be about a 3-point percent loss in the number of parking stalls. If you were to add the Main Street, Broadway, Market Street, and the, the, the street parking, that actually reduces it down to 2.2%. So, it is a reduction, uh, in the parking stalls, but you'll have a city-standard parking lot with city-standard, uh, lighting and landscaping and dealing with stormwater. So, when the water, when it does rain, when El Nino does hit, uh, the water will be conveyed and, you know, into a bioswell or out of the system so that we can actually park. Uh, staff is recommending option two. Option two, because it is a new parking lot, we believe that you can use the, um, the capital facility fees, the general government. The program that was adopted in 2013 included a parking study and, uh, facilities for the downtown. So, the money was identified in the CFF and the money is available to spend today. In addition to the recommendation of option two, we are recommending that the council direct staff to prepare an advertisement or request for proposal for the downtown parking to determine the existing demand, project future demand, develop a master plan for new downtown parking facilities and estimated dates that master plan improvements would be implemented. So, uh, if you have to answer any questions, and that too would be funded out of the same, uh, CFF, general government fund. If you have to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from Director Pickock? Yes, Councilman Nascimento.
Uh, two questions, um, Mike. Uh, first of all, Councilmember Dehart was sort of chuckling, so I think he knew I was going to ask this question. Does the city design include double-stripe parking in this lot?
Uh, it does not.
It does not?
But it doesn't mean it can't be. So, we could do that. It's...
Couldn't lose any parking spaces, right? Okay.
Now, typically, what you do when you have double parking is you, um, it's the center of the double parking.
Right.
The center is your normal, um, width. So, what, if the line was here and here, the double striping would just basically be right over the middle.
This is my personal mission to, like, create double-stripe parking in Turlock, so I have to, I just have to throw that out there.
Yeah, we are, we are coming back to you, I believe, in the next council meeting with the discussion of the double striping and what the DCAC and the planning commission have to say about it.
Thank you. Uh, and the second question is, I know some time ago, there was a discussion about potentially building a, a parking structure, uh, here, a two or three-story parking structure. Is that something that we're, we've just decided that we're, isn't feasible anymore?
Um, I think that's what you need to downtown study. I think that's why we need to go out and have the RFP and, and build a master plan. Uh, where would be the best location for a raised structure? Um, I'm, in my mind, I kind of thought, you know, there is a possibility that the work that we're doing here, we could use it as kind of a throat or an entrance into a parking garage and maybe it's set behind us. Uh, but, you know, again, it comes down to hiring a professional that can look at this and make, you know, recommendations of proper location and, uh, you know, and find, find a program that works for everyone.
Wouldn't necessarily mean that we're no longer pursuing that, uh, because of the conjunction?
No, I think we, we, personally, I think that we have to pursue it long-term. Um, but I think that when you have large expenditures of that nature, um, you typically have to bond for the improvements. Therefore, you typically have to have revenue to make payments. So, we have to figure out a, a timing, a standpoint of when it makes sense to, um, build such a structure so that you have the revenues to support it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Any que-, questions or comments from the public? All right, I'll close public participation and bring back to the council for consideration.
Mayor, I'd like to advance, uh, as stated under items eight C, uh, directing staff to proceed with option two and to fund design, inspection, construction of the Broadway City Hall parking lot, primarily utilizing or based upon utilizing capital facilities fees. I think that rather, Mike, not to correct you, but, but just to refocus us, it's not spending, it's investing in, in what I truly believe to be a, a worthwhile project for our downtown. I think it begins to elevate our game with respect to our commitment of downtown, uh, and I think it's going to, uh, serve our city well. I would advance this.
Well, put, uh, both motions?
Yeah, yes, to both. I'm sorry, we can do that, right?
All right, so we have a, all right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Dehart, seconded by Councilmember Boo Block for both motions. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes, motion carries five to zero. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you so much. Moving on to request to authorize staff to proceed with the property owner notification requirements of Proposition 218 for the consideration of increasing solid waste user fees and establishing a public hearing date of October 13th, 2015. Director Cook. I know. Director Cook, you knew you were up and you're still walking all the way up here. Come on.
Director Cook's still on DC time, unfortunately.
(laughing)
So, uh, good evening, Mayor, so as have the members of the council. This is, as you mentioned, an opportunity to consider increasing the monthly solid waste user rates by proceeding with the property owner notification requirements of Proposition 218 and establishing a public hearing date of October 13th, 2015. At the end of April of this year, the city council authorized staff to proceed with the first step in considering a rate increase for solid waste, uh, user rates. Since April, staff has been meeting with Turlock Scavenger to complete a review of the methodologies that Scavenger used to determine the proposed rate increases, and staff did not note any concerns. The pro-, the process did take a little longer than we expected, which has pushed the public hearing, proposed public hearing back to October of this year. Um, Scavengers requested the rate increase be adjusted to address their increased costs of operation, including increased, uh, fees at the Sanzlos County Waste Facilities. That's the Fink Road landfill and the Covanta Waste to Energy Facility. Uh, you, council, as you know in the packet, the last rate increase for Turlock Scavenger was in 2003. It's almost 12 years ago. As proposed by Turlock Scavenger, the typical residential rate for solid waste services would increase by a little bit more than 9%. And Turlock Scavengers proposing, and staff supports, a one-time rate increase for the next five years instead of a series of five, uh, rate increases, of, of five smaller rate increases over five years. So, rather than a small rate increase for the next five years, a one-time rate increase that's good for the next five years. So, how does that affect, affect rates? A, a typical 32-gallon gray car for a residential customer, their rate would go up $2.30 per month. Right now, they are paying $25.10. That would go up to $27.40. For a slightly larger service, the rates would increase by $3.10 per month and increase from, uh, $33.10 to $36.20. And in your packet is Exhibit A, which is a summary of the potential impact of rates to all their customers and various types of services. And this is slightly different to the draft proposal brought to you in, um, April because at that time, we've been, we spent working on the, uh, rate methodology. Um, so, the protest hearing at the city council will be October 13th, uh, 2015, where ballots will be, uh, counted. So, you know, the step now, we'd send out notices to all property owners and customers. They would get a chance to submit a written ballot in opposition of the rate increases. And as you remember from our water rate increases, Proposition 218 is a majority protest. So, uh, most people have to, more than 50% have to vote against the rate increase for automatically not to be adopted. Or alternatively, the city council could choose not to adopt it after the protest hearing is, is held. So, um, Mr. Marchant is here, the president and CEO of Turlock Scavenger and his team, to answer any specific questions, but I'll be happy to answer any general questions for the council this time.
Any questions or comments for Director Cook? Yes, Councilman Nascimento.
So, a comment. I want to, um, recognize, uh, Director Cook and, uh, City Manager Roy Roslin for their work, uh, with the county to, to really reduce our, our costs. I think this rate increase could be significantly higher, had an oven for your efforts. Um, and also recognize, uh, Mr. Alan Marchant. I know he runs a very lean operation, uh, and is always trying to reduce costs to, to avoid any type of, uh, rate increases. So, thank you all for your efforts.
Any other questions or comments? Councilman Boo Block.
Just to, uh, piggyback on that, I, Mr. Marchant, uh, you've been pretty patient with us working back between two different counties and, and I really appreciate that because that, that's got to be kind of, uh, disconcerting for you and your staff. But thanks for hanging in there.
Any other questions or comments for Director Cook at this point? All right, I'm kidding. Uh, opening it up to public comment, any, anyone from the public like to address the council on this issue? Or like to speak to Mr. Marchant again? Anybody else? No? All right, then I'll close public participation and bring it back to the council. Yes, Councilman Dehart.
Oh, Michael's gone. That's okay. That's okay. You can... Uh, I, I think I just...
It's a power play. He's just trying to see if you'll walk back. (laughing)
Who's, who's really in control here?
(laughing)
Um, Michael, uh, w- once before, we had this conversation on a different subject. Uh, as is no doubt, well documented by this point in numerous locations, I am not a big fan of 218. Um, primarily because, uh, I think it makes the assumption that everything's okay unless somebody says it's not. And, and, and so, this is not a chastisement of you as much as it is our system. But I'd just like to determine how is it we're going to go about administering this thing to ensure that the maximum possible dissemination and response option is there for the citizens of Turlock. Uh, 218 is an absolute abomination, in my opinion, um, and should be eliminated from the books. Uh, I don't have any strong feelings, though. But I, but I think that until, uh, we get, uh, communication avenues set up, uh, in a proper way across a couple of different, we're, we're narrowing the scope of this. But until we get those avenues of communication down and nailed to, uh, uh, to a T, we really need to make sure that people understand that, that unless they vote no, they don't have a voice. And, uh, if they want something, they have to do this. And if they don't want something, they better not do something else. And so, uh, the, the, dealing with this negative thing is, is, is not a good public policy, in my view. And so, whatever we can do, and, and Mayor, I'd like to see that we, uh, somehow reinforce our efforts as a city, city manager, uh, to ensure that our, that our populace, uh, are not just informed, but they're, they understand completely the ramifications of not responding. Uh, silence, in this particular case, is consent. And I, I disagree with that premise completely. So, uh, once again, not chastisement as much as I think for the record, just to say that, that our citizens deserve far better, um, than what we've been provided to administer. Thank you very much. Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Boo Block, seconded by Councilmember, uh, Dehart. Uh, clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes, motion carries five to zero. Thank you so much. Thank you for the report. Item E was addressed earlier, so we'll move on to council items for future consideration. Yes, Councilman Jacob.
Um, I, uh, got a chance to do a little road trip down to Southern California a couple of weeks ago. And on my way, I couldn't help but notice all of the, um, cities that have these large, beautiful signs that say, "Welcome to," insert city name there. Um, and so, um, I talked to, uh, City Manager about it and we got, um, Director Pickock to work on communicating with Caltrans, see what the process is to get some signs put up across, along 99. Um, and there is, is a process, um, that Caltrans has, um, in place, um, that I think we're going to be pursuing. Um, and it's for future consideration that it will take some funding. And so, just wanted to make the council aware that that is something that, uh, hopefully, we can get some funding for.
Any other items? All right, moving on to council comments. Any council comments tonight? Seeing none, um, I do have one comment. Um, I just want to thank, uh, Councilman Dehart for your words, uh, earlier today. Um, I think you were the right person to deliver that and, uh, I really appreciate it. And, uh, I appreciate your, uh, guidance on this council in a lot of ways. it, and, uh, I appreciate your, uh, guidance on this council in a lot of ways, so thank you so much. All right, moving on to closed session. City Attorney.